I'd like to call to all the Lumsster Planning Board for October 15, 2018. Six thirty, we have an open public meeting for a site plan approval for Central Street, Met 500, Parcel 5.
All right, for the record, Chris Anderson with Paning Engineering. We're going to have to block five realty trusts for the construction of a commercial building of Central Street. Just to orientate ourselves, we have Central Street on the bottom of the page here. As you go to the right, we go towards the center of Lumsster. Towards the south down to the interstate junction with the 190. Jehovah's Witness Building being located in the south of the market. Currently, the property is undeveloped. There is a boring vegetated wetland series that's located along the northern property line. We have filed with Conservation Commission and they're going through that process at this For the proposed construction, we'll be constructing a new 9600 square foot commercial building with access to the first floor and a second floor with parking being provided on both levels of the site. Access to the site will be via a paved driveway which will extend along the front of the property, extend towards the southern, along the southern property line, and to a secondary parking area near the back to provide parking for the lower level of the building. Drainage in the site will be utilizing some catch basins and water quality units to capture and treat the stormwater directed towards an underground storage system and then ultimately to a level spread device for the loss of communications. Sewage will be via a single pump station which will transmit sewage from the lower level of the site via a low pressure sewer main to an existing manufacturer within an existing sewer easement on the abutting property. Currently, there is a utility stub coming off of that structure into our property, so it's, proposed work on the abutting property will be very minimal at best.
I got a question on the sewer. You're going with the E1 system?
Yes.
You don't have a, you can't do a regular gravity flow?
You can't because we have proposed building uses in the bottom floor and the elevation delta is a little bit different.
Okay.
So, it's a low pressure sewer system. We design and utilize it on several other projects. It's relatively low maintenance and works functionally better than that. Water will be provided via a new connection within Central Street to the existing 30-inch main. Because of the size of fire suppression line will be required prior to construction, the final size and design of the fire suppression system in line will be performed and provided to the Building Department and Fire Department. We are currently providing 41 parking spaces with a total of 39 actually being required for the intended use. We're proposing a commercial because it's a little more restrictive in the parking count, 250 square feet per space compared to any other use really.
But you do realize if you restrict it to that, that's what you're restricted to? To the 45 that you get?
Yeah, so we have the 41 spaces.
Or 41 rather.
Yeah, and whatever uses by right fit out is made, built up. Compliance with the zoning ordinance and parking requirements will be made and confirmed with the Building Department as intended to get used. So, at the end of the day, the total use of the building will have to be at or less than the 41 required parking spaces. Yes?
Okay.
As required by the ordinance, we're also proposing to construct, or plant 17, or sorry, 14 trees throughout the perimeter of the project. Snow storage will be provided via a couple of small areas located near the front with the massive majority of the snow storage being provided near the rear of the property. The intent being that as the plow comes through, it can push the snow downhill to a large flat area for storage. In the case of large storm events, the storm, or the snow will be removed and disposed accordingly.
Because that's going down about, what, 10 feet?
Yeah.
A 10-foot drop?
Yeah. The lower level's around 78.
Yep.
Upper level's around 78.
So 20 feet, right, down to 458?
Yeah, about 12. 467?
Oh, from the top of the lot, right, looking at the.
The greater part of the.
Oh, yeah, the rear park. Yeah, so it's down to 58 in this area, but in the parking area it's around 67, 68.
So if you push the snow down the bank, just a question, what's the drainage? Is that calculated in?
It's snow storage, there's.
No, what do you, what do you.
About that regular.
What, the, the sink and the, and the stuff that's in the sand and stuff that's in there.
Well, they got erosion control.
Yeah, but they're going to be below the erosion control.
So I guess the question is.
You've got erosion control at one elevation and you're saying you're going to put your snow past that?
No.
Down the hill?
No, the snow storage will be placed on top of the hill and pitched towards the actual system.
Right. Oh, it's going to be pitched toward the building?
Yeah.
Not toward the slope?
No. There's, the top of the slope will be around 68 and everything in this area around 67, so everything's going to try to pitch towards the actual.
Okay.
Until the snow plow's pushing over the slope. Which is something you're going to be careful with because then, you know, you got, you might encroach on your drainage. And it will happen, you know it will happen. They'll push it right over the hill.
This is a rather large area, this is about 20 feet, give or take.
Yep.
So that's a lot of snow.
It is. But it's also a lot of water, too.
Yes, but stormwater is being directed into the system.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, just a word of caution, man. If they're pushing it over that slope, you could have some problems.
Well, they can't. I mean, that'll have to be, the requirement that they don't push it up to that slope.
And Conservation usually restricts it like that, too.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Now, you've got a hundred foot buffer on here.
Yes.
That's the wetlands.
That would be the wetland buffer, perhaps.
That's the wetland buffer, okay. Where is your flood, is there a flood plain in this area?
Nope, there is no flood plain in this area.
Okay.
Off the top of that note for the wetlands, we will construct a retaining wall along the northern property, or northern line of the project just to inhibit further encroachment and alterations to those resource areas, too.
Okay.
We have received the department head comments, I can review those.
Sure. Good reading.
So the first comment, or the comment was from the board out regarding the abutting residential property and regarding the potential traffic light, or traffic and noise and hours of operation. The site has been designed so that we're not directly pointing headlights at the actual abutting property as much as possible. The parking is being directed towards the actual building in the north, in the upper parking area. But in further review, we did notice that as a car would be pulling out of the site, there would be potential shine coming off of the driveway because it faces the house, which is right here. As such, we will be installing a row of evergreen shrubbery along that entire, this part, portion of the project just to inhibit that light shine. So.
Have you had any communication with the committee of the.
Not yet, no.
We'll see if they hear. Okay.
Second comment is from Building Department regarding the parking spaces. In review of the actual ordinance, the only real use that can indicate the 9600, or the 96 parking spaces would be a restaurant or a health pub. As we said before, the overall tenant use will be compatible with the zoning ordinance. It's just more of a comment so that we're aware and everybody else is aware that there is a potential to be 96, but it's not the intent.
So if you needed 96 and you put a restaurant in it, do you guys come up with the additional parking spots?
Yes, and the final tenant build-out will be, have the required 41 spaces, more or less, or less than 41 spaces, sorry.
Okay, so you restrict it, so you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Constations comment is regarding the notice from the tenant. We have filed that and we're actually having a sit walk on Thursday to review the site. DPW comments, first DPW comment was regarding the soil testing within the area of the detention system. We're not using infiltration, so we're not accounting for natural recharge of the land. The soils in the area are not that great, so it's not really pertinent for us to do so. The system has been designed so that it's roughly at the same grade as it currently is right now. There is a slight cut of approximately 18 inches in the uppermost corner of the site, but beyond that, it's actually more spilling and anything else. Furthermore, we will be also installing a subdrain system underneath the system to allow for proper drawdown and to prevent groundwater regurgitating to the system. But we will be also performing the required tests with the DPW prior to construction.
Are you actually going into wetlands?
No.
You're outside of that, okay.
Absolutely, I'm.
25 feet, okay. On the 25-foot.
Lumsster doesn't have a setback from the wetlands. So we can legitimately go.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next two comments were regarding access permits from the Mass DOT. We are aware of that and we will refine them shortly for the access and the utility connections. Fourth comment is regarding the sewer easement on the adjoining property. Attached to the comment response letter is a copy of the deed which describes the 20-by-20 sewer easement on the abutting property to connect to. As I said earlier, there is already existing stub going onto the site, so our intent is to connect directly into that and not have to disturb as much as possible nearby.
And ask the residents, easements on the residence.
Uh huh.
But nobody's talking.
The next comment was regarding inspection ports for the subsurface system. Locations the inspection ports will be at prior to the construction of subplans. Typically, as we're done with these systems, that we design the capacity and flows and everything going through them and then they're sent down to the actual manufacturer for their final fine tuning and installation requirements. But typically, we'll be proposing to install them at the first inlet to the system and at the outlet of the system. It's just a normal six-inch BBC cleanout cover and you can look right into it and inspect the system as needed. The next comment was regarding the dumpster and its emptying criteria. We're anticipating that it's not going to be emptied all that often. General use is not that trash heavy, such as like a restaurant or anything like that, so we're anticipating about two to three times a week, maybe even less. But there should be plenty of room in order for the truck to back out into a parking space as needed.
Can you show the turning radius, how that would work? Do you have any idea? Where is the dumpster and what's the.
Dumpster is located near the rear of the property.
Right there?
Right there. So a truck can easily make a turn through here.
How much feet do you have there?
There's a 24-foot drive aisle and 18-foot parking space.
But if people were parked, they couldn't get in.
If people are parked there, you can't do that.
Yeah, but they can still back up off the site, too.
Then you got de, 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 all the way back.
Say again?
Yeah, the backup signals.
Yep.
Yeah, beep, beep a little.
Okay, so with people parked in the back there, you really can't make that turn, can you?
Unless it's done at a time when there's nobody there.
And as the tenants start moving around and as the schedule starts getting a little more known, defined if you will, truck, or the trash disposal systems and maintenance requirements will all be determined at that point in time, too. That's a tough setup.
I think we want to look at a new location.
Well, where could you put it?
On that other corner.
Right.
Over there.
Straight back?
Straight, straight on your driveway.
Down the end?
Here. So a truck comes in here, he picks up, he backs in here, he goes over. If you put it over here, he can't make that turn. He can't make this turn if there are cars parked here.
Right, yeah.
But if it's in here, he can come out this way and that way.
Yep. That makes sense. That makes sense.
And it's away from the house.
Where's this residence?
The residence is actually.
Over on the right-hand side.
Okay, that's it, yeah. So there's quite a bit of distance between the house and the dumpster area.
What's on the left side?
On this side? Yeah, this is the Jehovah's Witness, so this is all parking right here.
Okay.
The wings.
Okay.
Where's your rear entrance in here?
480.
Right here, right in the middle.
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't make any difference on the dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah. So the next comment was regarding the water quality unit for the treatment. This water quality unit does have the ability to have two inlets due to the size of the flows coming out of it. Prior to construction, there was the MPA site, or shop drawing for it and flow was reviewed by the actual manufacturer at the firmness, but in the past, we've used this system, this type of unit with more than two inlets, so it's safe to say that they will be compatible with that design. The next comment was regarding one of the peak rates to one of the design points. Currently, the site drains to one of two areas, one being at a local, at a point further down north of the site and the prime, and the major one is being located near the actual wetland itself. Upon reviewing this entire watershed within the street, within Central Street, there's actually really no catch basins or anything to speak of along the site, pretty much all the way up the giant tech road. So pretty much all of this water is coming straight through, along the front of our site. And the only increase that we're providing onto the road would be the first 12 feet of the actual driveway, just because we have to maintain separation, maintain the curved shoulder lines within the right-of-way. Otherwise, we would be blowing out and just sort of permanently altering the actual wetlands itself. The increase that this point experiences further down the street is very minimal. It's only about three hundredths in a hundred year storm. It's a very small amount. And the actual increase in volume is .002 acre feet, so it's almost negligible. And it's our stance because of how we have to grade it and to ensure that we don't destroy the wetlands by maintaining that existing flows. And the overall scope of what's happening over here, that design point is actually the mindest increase, if you will.
Is there any, so you're, you're going to be higher than the street just on the driveway?
No, it's going to be equal to the street.
At the front, you're equal to the street.
Yeah, because it's going to go lower.
Yeah, so the road goes up, hits a ridge, and then goes back down into our site, so we can maintain the gutter flow line within Central Street.
Okay, yeah.
So unfortunately, there's about 12 feet right into the right-of-way line of the property that has to pitch back towards us to the street. So that small increase is what's causing the increase in the rates.
So after that, so the street is at what, about 480 and your.
Yeah, and this area.
Ground is 478?
Yeah, so.
Like a 2-foot difference?
Yeah, the contour right at the entrance is around the 480 mark.
Yep.
So it's going to go up and then back down into the site.
But just the 12 feet and then.
Right back onto our site.
Yeah.
So it's very minimal. We're going to review this with the DOT because we are technically, are technically increasing the rates, but the DOT will also review this. And the last comment from DPW was regarding the subcatchment apps. DPW started requesting digital copies and it was my mistake that it wasn't provided in that report, so those have been forwarded over to DPW for the review. The Fire Department had a certain relative to the volume and pressure test, just stating that they need to be performed prior to construction and we acknowledge that, and they want to be provided with the fire alarm and spring complaints, which will be part of that, too. And the Police Department did not see any issues with traffic or traffic.
Do you have anything else that you wish to add to your presentation?
Hit all the points.
Okay. I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have anyone in the audience who has a question on this project? One last time, does anyone have any questions or comments on this project? One last time, does anyone have any questions or comments? Board members?
It's pretty thorough.
Okay.
I agree about the move in the garbage.
So we can, we can review this, we have the correct programs that we can confirm and we can review the numbers, so we can review that DPW.
Yeah.
Or sorry, parts of it, so.
That would make it easier to figure out.
I request that last review with DPW and if they give their stamp of approval, we can leave it as is or if we need to, we can ask for their discretion.
That looks good.
No, no, we don't want to leave it as is, we want to move it.
Yeah, we're going to move it.
Yeah, that's it. It won't stay as is. Okay. Okay. I have no, other comments for the board, or any comments for the audience? A motion is in order.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. Unaffraid discussion. Hearing non-narrative vote in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Okay. Regular meeting, call for order.
Patrick Carla.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser.
Yeah.
Salvatore Tony.
Yeah.
John Chusa.
Yeah.
Carol Victoriosa. Thomas Carrigan.
Okay. Men at their previous meetings, September 17th minutes, we have.
I make a motion to accept it.
Have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Made in second to accept the September 17th minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No.
Hearing none? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries. Plan submitted, A and R approved for 33 Garfield Street. We have a comment on this, on Garfield Street, and we'll take a look at it.
My name is Charles Bunnick, I'm the surveyor on this plan. Basically, what we are doing is seven lots owned by the owner and we're basically adjusting one of the lot lines to create a buildable lot on the left side. The other part of the property's been developed for years and just making an adjustment on.
Is it that parcel B?
So what are you moving to what?
What are you moving to what?
Okay.
It's really, I looked at this map and it doesn't tell me really.
Okay, we've got, first of all, we've got existing seven lots which we've designated here on the plan.
Right.
And what we're showing here is parcel, proposed parcel A is the existing house, basically, and.
So it's the bottom half of the draw.
On the right-hand side. And in the back, we're adjusting one of the lot lines, we're reducing the side of lot 109 and basically conveying that to parcel B, which consists of lots 108, 107, 106, and a five-foot strip of lot 109.
Okay.
Okay, so you propose parcel A, which right now is existing lot 104?
104, 5.
104, 5, 9, and 10.
It's all 1. It's all one lot.
Right at somebody's house.
Correct.
And a pool.
And a pool.
And the other half is where you want to build it.
So you're moving this over.
Right.
And what does that give you for total square footage?
Uh, parcel.
If you get the eight, six, seven, and eight together.
They're going to make it four.
Six, seven, and eight is 21,896 square feet. And it leaves parcel A with 22,425.
You do know that's a non-viable lot.
What is?
Well, that lot there is, it requires, it's on a paper street.
What?
If you put this lot together.
Yeah.
It's on a paper street, so when they come to us, they're going to have to, it's going to have to come to us as a subdivision, not as a special permit.
Why? It's a.
It's not, Garfield Street.
The private.
Garfield Street is not an accepted street.
Okay, that's right, they're private streets.
That's correct.
And so our title goes to the center of the streets.
You can go to the, no, no, that's not my argument.
Okay.
Okay, well, just to let you know, they can do that. A number of years ago, we used to be able to do this with a special permit. And because of a ruling in, down the Cape someplace, I forget where it was.
It was in Attica.
It might have been, yeah, in Attica. Because of a ruling that says that we no longer can do that, you can, because we used to be able to say, okay, you put this together and you have a special permit, you come back to us and we could give you a permit to build a house on that with a special permit. The regulations today say we can't do that. You can create this lot, you're fine, but when they come back to us, okay, they have to come to us as a subdivision, a one-lot subdivision, and you have to meet the subdivision regulations to build on that lot.
Okay, I'm trying to.
I mean, no, we can give you the A and R.
Yeah.
That, like, I don't, we can give you the, I'm not saying I'm not going to give you the A and R.
Okay.
I can give you the A and R.
For the lot.
But the lot, okay, I just want to make it perfectly clear right now and make it clear to your client that when they go forward, okay, and they'll be told by the building inspector, they can't get a building permit and they come to it unless their documentation is a site plan, is for a subdivision, a one-lot subdivision.
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my, get this on my.
I realize that.
What's keeping it away from being a buildable lot?
That it's on a paper.
It is a buildable lot. It's on a paper street. We're talking about documentation.
Okay, but the back of it is on, is a paper street, not the front.
Doesn't make any, Garfield is also, Garfield is not an accepted street.
So all the private.
Wait a minute.
If it's a private street, not accepted, that's, okay, same difference.
Okay.
So we can't, so in other words, when they come forward, their documentation will have to be for a one-lot subdivision, and they would have to meet subdivision regulations.
And that probably means road improvements.
Okay, I just have a question.
Okay.
If, if Garfield was not an accepted street, how do they build all those houses on it?
Ah.
When, when it was created, when the subdivision was created, they built houses, it was okay, and now it's not.
That's correct.
Why? How long ago were those houses?
All the houses, 30, 40, 50 years ago, 100 years ago? We have over 100, over 100 streets in this city that are not accepted. We used to, let me say used to, when I was first on board 10 years ago, 15, okay, we used to be able to say, okay, on that street, you would take, no, I've seen it laughing because it's a long time ago.
It's a long time.
But on that, we'd say, on that street, you'd have to approve the street in the front there and we'd give you a special permit. But there was a, a problem with, in Attica, and it went to the courts. And the courts came down, the land court, said that we cannot give a special permit on an unaccepted street, okay? The only way that lot can be built on is using subdivision regulations.
Which you can still build.
No, I'm saying, you still build.
You're just going to follow the subdivision.
But you have to follow subdivision regulations.
Right.
Okay?
No.
So that's, yeah.
But this language is saying it's not even entitled to lay.
It's not entitled to A and R endorsement.
That's the language.
Yeah, that's, he's saying, it's not entitled to A and R endorsement, but I don't know about that, and I'm not sure about that. That was our recommendation.
You create the lot, but then you're just going to have.
Well, you create it and we can endorse it.
Yeah.
So I don't know where you go with that.
No, I don't either.
But, I mean, if, if the board's saying we can endorse it.
Well, see, I, I try to look that up in the A and R.
I was reading it more like, we don't have to.
Yes, it is an approval not required.
Not entitled to.
See.
We're not entitled to it.
See, I don't have, I don't have Carol here tonight to answer the question, you know.
But it doesn't say we can't endorse it, it just says that we can make the call to not endorse it if we so choose.
So I'd say. So, I, I'd say, in, in my book, I'd say, I would endorse it, let you make the law.
Right, right.
Okay?
Let's get the law.
You can do that, but.
When it goes in to try to get a permit.
To build.
They'll build it.
To build.
Then there's another.
There's another, barely work that you've gotta come forward.
Subdivision.
And have to go into subdivision regulations.
So you might need to do some improvements on the street.
On the road, on the sidewalk, and a lot of things, on, see, on subdivision regulations, it's the planning board. So subdivision requires straight trees and thirty-two feet wide, and, and, uh, and certain things like that. Those are types of things that we can waiver, because the subdivision regulations are planning board regulations. We don't have to go to the city council. So what we can do is we can say, okay, it's a one-lot, but you gotta do subdivision. So that means you gotta put in the, the street, you gotta have some place to turn around. Okay? And there might be some other things that we're gonna do, I don't know what they all are. That can require, if there's no sidewalk on Garfield Street, most likely, we wouldn't require you to put in the sidewalk, but we would have to waiver it. All those things would have to come in as waivers, and that would sub, a standard subdivision regulation. Okay?
And then we just vote on.
So that's, and then we have to vote on each waiver.
Yep.
Okay, so that's how it's done. It just needs a little more, we just, I'm just trying to tell you upfront. Okay, so it can tell your client the same thing. Okay, we'll accept it, you know, I recommend that we accept, you know, I don't have a problem making this into a lot. Okay, and I know where Garfield Street is, and I was down there today, so, yeah, no, not a problem. But the regulations or the procedures you have to go through are subdivision procedures, not special permit.
Well, no approval not required.
May I ask a question?
You know, funding.
If Garfield was an accepted street, then if you had your frontage, you just got a building permit.
Right.
But it's not gonna be that easy. Okay?
Does this shed?
Well, the shed will have to move.
Right, I was gonna say, it's just, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's the, that's on the, on the person, yeah, just like you got the tennis courts there, I don't.
Right.
I don't know what he's gonna do with the tennis courts, you know? He's gonna have to, if he sells a lot, he'll have to make arrangements for the, the people he sells it to.
Maybe it becomes pickleball.
Yeah. Well, it goes the other way, it goes pickleball.
There you go.
They can a pickleball.
Well, well, what John's saying is, we can create the lot, uh, and approve the lot, but when it comes time to build, we just have to make sure that you come in front of us with the plans, and they meet the subdivision criteria.
Okay.
And, and anything that's out of it, you just, you just request a waiver. And then all the paperwork's in order, there's no issues, and, uh, everybody's happy.
So are these, is the street paved?
The street is paved.
Yeah, it is paved, yeah.
Is it comparable to others in the area?
No, it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're almost like eighteen feet wide, twenty feet wide.
Even this applies.
No.
Because it said, this says that the proposed public way is paved, it's comparable in others in the area, and provides adequate access, then it isn't entitled to A and R endorsement, even if it is a paper street.
Yeah.
Now, now we're going the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna endorse the law anyway.
We'll endorse the law, I'm not sure, problem with that, okay? But it's saying, hey, we go from, you know, but just no, with the processes after we, after the law is endorsed, it's not gonna be just getting a building permit, you're gonna have to go another step.
Maybe.
Okay?
Maybe.
So, okay.
But it's not a, it's not a big deal.
It shouldn't be a big deal.
It sounded a little confusing to me, it's really not. We'll get the law squared away when it comes time to pull the permit, and if, if it does need subdivision approval, it's just one house lots of, and anything, you know, you can request the street to be the same width as it is, the same, uh, the same cover as it is, things of that nature, that's all. Because you have, you have, you have the, you have the, the, uh, the right square footage.
Right, you need the, you need the frontage.
Right, right.
Yeah, so you're all good with all of it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, do I have any other comments?
By doing that, is the other existing house, is it creating issues with something else?
No, the other house, they, is, has, has.
There's still their, more than fifteen feet to the side. I think you need to put the, yeah.
No, the only, the only issue you run into is, is with the, like you said, the shed and the tennis courts, but that's not an issue.
Right, move, right.
Okay, and the tennis court created into pickleball, that's all. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Um, any other discussion, gentlemen? No, it's not a hearing.
Well, make a motion to endorse.
I have a motion to endorse, so I have a second.
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 Motion made and seconded to endorse. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. A and R approval for one nine six mechanic street.
How we doing?
Yeah, good.
Uh, my name's Kevin Keeler, I'm the, um, facilities chairman for Cafeteries.
Yes.
So, um, this existing building, uh, has been our, uh, north, um, county headquarters for years. And, um, we have paid rent, uh, to, um, St. Cecilia's for all that time, and unfortunately for us, they've kept the rent low, because we're also a Catholic nonprofit organization, but unfortunately, we haven't put, able to put any money into the building, and the building's in, in, uh, in need of some serious, uh, work. Um, and so, uh, we did a feasibility study, and the renovation work is gonna be about a quarter of a million dollars, and we're ready to do it, um, but we don't want to do it if we don't own the building. Um, and we actually had to start because the weather, um, has been a factor, and we took the oil tanks out, I don't know if you saw the design, but, um, we took the oil tanks out, um, last month, and we're putting in a gas heating system into the building. Um, we're gonna do a lot of exterior work to the building to make it really look nice and classy for the neighborhood. And, uh, the, the lot that we're subdividing off meets all of the current zoning regulations for setbacks and square foot accounting, and, um, we also have, uh, based on discussions with the building inspector, twenty-six parking spaces that are coming with the building, but we're also going to grant easement to St. Cecilia's to use those parking spaces on Friday evening for bingo. So.
Why not? It is.
It is, because that's the only time the parking lot is completely filled, is when they're doing.
I'm gonna say, is this your lot line?
Yes, that is my lot.
So this is all your lot line?
Yep.
This is just to show the pockets.
Parking, exactly.
Okay, because I just wanted to get that straight on your setbacks, because.
So what's required for parking, just curious, what are the requirements on the parking for that building?
Uh, well, we, the, it was kind of a gray area, the building inspector and I went back and forth, because zoning is protected under the Dover Act, because it's a nonprofit Catholic organization, but we're moving our, um, women's recovery program in here, which is gonna be sixteen ladies, so.
Yep.
Sixteen ladies, ten staff at max capacity for staff, which is never ten people there on staff, but he said worst-case scenario would be twenty-six parking spaces, that's how we came up with it.
Okay. And that's, and that's over there.
That's it, yeah, we have one.
No, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
That's gonna be fine.
Except on bingo night, but that's okay, it's a Friday night.
And we're two staff members on Friday evening, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, now, familiar with the property, familiar with the area?
Yep.
And, uh.
Just delighted to continue to do our work, good work in the neighborhood.
Yep, sure. Motion to endorse.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Sal and Pat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Very, very much. Have a good evening.
You too, good job. Yeah, yeah, that's good. That's good. Well, we gotta make sure what was right, because we just had that accurate.
Okay, three point three, site plan approval for one five eight Crawford Street.
Uh, we have to schedule an open public meeting. All they were doing, uh, was relocating an existing portable garage and the construction of a new garage.
Okay.
So we just have to schedule it?
Schedule it.
We have eleven five at this next meeting, we have nothing.
Six thirty.
Okay. Eleven five.
Do you have a motion for it?
Six thirty.
That's Fred's, I'll just get it.
Fred's motion made. Seconded Sal, all in favor say aye for eleven five at six thirty. All in favor say aye, both say no. Motion carries. Old business, schedule public hearing, city council petition forty-one dash eighteen. Kristen Kelly, planning director, amend, uh, nine, amend section nine, uh, chapter nine, section twenty-two sixty, the zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation home testing for stormwater infiltration detention areas.
So we have to schedule, um, another.
This is a recommendation.
We have to schedule the public hearing?
That's correct.
Yeah.
November sixth, fifth.
No, it's a public hearing.
So November fifth.
Yeah, but I have to advertise it, so if I, I can do it for the chat.
You can, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll make that, uh.
Six thirty-five.
Six forty?
Six forty.
Six four, yeah.
Six forty?
Six forty. Five.
You're really gonna take ten minutes on a garage?
Well, yeah, by the time you get in. I, I, it takes you to read things, you know.
That's true.
I kind of slow. Hey, stop that.
We all follow.
I like his mouth. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Pat, second by.
I make a motion to put it off at six thirty-five on the.
That's a better plan.
Fifth of November.
Six thirty-five, okay.
Six thirty-five, I have to advertise it, so six thirty-five.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna spend ten minutes on that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Okay, new business.
We'll start at late o'clock now.
Site plan approved for Central Street, map five hundred, parcel five. Uh, all in all, I thought it pretty good, we had all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the condition we make is that they move the, to the dumpster to the end of the entrance parking, that they don't put the five hundred.
Yeah, we can't let them push the snow over the bank here, that's got to be monitored and.
And the snow, and the snow is not to be pushed over to the rear bank.
Not that that's enforceable.
Yeah, well, let's put it on here, and all department head comments, uh, amend.
Yes.
Uh, move the dumpster to where specifically?
To the left side.
To the left side of the lot.
Of the rear park, yeah, right at the entrance.
The end of the entrance by driveway.
Back of the left side of the entrance.
Back of the left side of the entrance.
Yeah, like, all the way in the back.
No, no pushover, and no snow pushed over the.
Rear bank.
And, and no, and no store, snow over the.
And all the, and the car.
Right. Well, yeah, we can't find that's.
Yep. They'll probably put something in there about the type of.
Oh, yeah, they'll, well, they'll do wetlands and all that, and they do, they'll, they also do the stormwater.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Who, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you.
Fred?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, for those comments, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion passed. Communications, we're skipping Montrose Street.
Oh, I know mine.
Yeah, sixty-one. Richard Road, Montrose Street, discussion.
Well, you gotta be careful, Laura's here, and she's on the Pittsburgh Planning Department, so she's looking back. Back and, uh, we.
It's not gonna help them, they're here. It's not helping them.
See, we have fun here. I think we all got this.
You, you all had it.
Some of it.
Although that's in color, it's probably better.
Well, this one I can read. Okay, yeah.
So I need some feedback, I need some feedback, so, um.
Be careful what you ask.
And I like this idea that we have, we can have a discussion now. Uh, I'm Paul DiGeronimo, and, uh, for way too many years, I've been working on this project in, on the Central Street. Ten or twelve years ago, we started the redevelopment of Johnny Appleseed Plaza. Uh, about ten years ago, we started the South End Woods condominium project, which is forty-two condominiums that we've now, uh, moved from apartments to condos, have all been sold out, it's a one unit. And then, uh, we had some good momentum over the last couple of years on Sartell Street, where we built, uh, eleven homes up here, and three on Johnny Appleseed, which through a special permit, we built the three units, and, uh, we just sold those over the last couple of months. So, the idea that we have is to bring, uh, we have a, a lot here that's still available, that's a field that you can see the picture on. It's just under nineteen hundred square feet of space, and it, it's on the same property, it's two different lots, but on the same property adjacent to a professional office building. And the concept here was to create a transition from the residential homes, the multifamily, single families, uh, there is commercial down here, to, uh, transition from the commercial area. So we were thinking about putting four, I was calling them brownstones, four apartments, uh, up close to the property line, so that would be a transition, it'd help block the urban pollution from, uh, Route one seven, um, Route twelve, the apartments, the, uh, the, well, the, the, from the apartments and the single families to, uh, Route twelve, the commercial. It'd be four units, it'd be up, up in front of the property line, um, I have this image, I'm not sure if I'm gonna do it, but brick, brick facade and do something, uh, nice, and we'd go from a wooden building to a multi, to four units, they'd be twenty by thirty or so in length each, and then you'd be able to go up into the multifamily, the, uh, the duplexes, and it'd be far enough away from, uh, the, the, the single families to create a, a nice barrier. And I was just looking for a discussion, uh, as you can see on the notice, um, it's all about really the transition, the, the conditions, we already have a curb cut here that's used for this professional building, and we'll be using the same ones, where we can, there's some blacktop added, but for the most part, we're keeping it away from the residential area. Um, we will bring in some type of landscaping to help delineate the two, there is a nice landscaping, uh, parcel here. Um, at one point, I was actually thinking about putting our own office here, because it is own commercial at this point, but, um, as consumer behavior changes, it's less deep commercial, and there's, um, there was a shortage of, uh, housing in this area, so it helped to add to that, um, and, and, and separation. So, uh, there is a mechanism, uh, it's, uh, to, to, to get this done, it's a site plan approval drawn, uh, to get it done, and I'm just trying to get some feedback to see if it's feasible.
Are you looking at basically one and a half spots per unit, is that what the six parking spaces you have, or is there more?
It's two.
Oh, there is more, I can see it, on the other side there.
So two per unit.
Two per unit, indeed, in fact, there is more, we requested more, uh, there is no storage here, uh, and there's plenty of parking for this single family, uh, for the, uh, office building.
Paul, is there no storage? You're not gonna push it into that buffer area, are you? On, on the buffer, Paul, refresh me to what it is now and then maybe what you'll propose.
I, I don't know what I propose quite yet, and I'll get somebody involved, but there is some high.
Is it abovites?
No, it's much higher than that. It's tall, evergreens.
There's evergreen, there's some deciduous trees.
So, but the predominance is, is it evergreens the predominance?
Yeah, it's deciduous.
Their leaves, I'm just, you know, for the protection of the neighborhood behind the residence aids, right? Because I don't, I don't see John Albert here, he's always here. You guys talk to those guys, I'm just curious.
He hasn't been notified, he'll be here. This is only preliminary.
This is just preliminary, just to try to figure it out, I understand.
So we have not talked to anybody else in town, we haven't talked to the neighbors, we haven't done any of that, we didn't know what to start with, and so we thought we'd be here to see what the physical, sheet of building.
When I ask you where your finger is there, where the parking is, how close is that to the single family home right behind it? I mean, it looks like it's right on their, right up to their property line.
It's not up to the property line, but they, they will get some better pictures, there is, if you look at it, there is some parking, there's parking there already that goes to it, but there is a demising, I think that's a wrong word, there is a, I'm gonna say this wrong, a thickness of vegetation creating a live wall that's there now.
So they're not gonna get lights and noise?
Um, no, it's there now, so that's, that's, that's part of the reason is because they have direct flow out to this larger commercial area, and so there would be something here for that.
Good point.
Let me step back for a moment.
Good point.
I have not discussed this with anybody, I thought this would be the first place to go, and we'll look at the, if we get a green light and it seems feasible, I will be talking to those.
Paul, just, just, and I don't know, you know, I'm just gonna throw this out here, if you redesigned the parking so that the parking isn't facing, you know, the residential single family homes, so, you know, the ones especially on this side, you know, going into the Albert's back property, right? If they're pulling in straight forward, those headlights, when the leaves are off the trees, even though there's a, you know, there's some growth there, that could be problematic, you know? So I'm wondering if, if that could be redesigned where you may flow it a different way, you know, the opposite way, horizontal instead of vertical.
By the way, you're still good.
They start to pull in, but, but it's, it lessens it.
But should put a fence up, you have the.
Yeah, that's all part, that's all part of the plans.
What I've learned over the years is that there's people smarter than me, I was, I was going to get a landscape architect involved, because I, I am conscientious of the demising area, and it might be a simple fence with a, I don't want to touch what's there, because it's natural, but one of the, I don't know the distance between the back of the decks to the property line, or the back, the idea is to keep it.
Yeah, I don't think the problem would be just where the parking lot is.
It's right through here.
Yeah, and if you put a fence there.
Or maybe you push it forward to here, I don't know, maybe you can push it forward here depending on how much room you have, because we don't know how many feet.
Then you're getting rid of the street.
Have you had anything specific for this lot yet that's come up? I'm just trying to refresh my memory if you had anything proposed for that spot yet in the previous plans.
Well, what we approved many years ago is that we had a medical office building here, that there was parking here, we had parking here, it was, I can't remember, 4,000 square feet. We didn't get the last signature on the lease, and so we, the plan wasn't done, but we did put, with the help of, well, the town, we put the three single families here, and so I think this is much less offensive.
Yeah, I like.
Right.
Absolutely.
That's a good point.
I just, you know, because see, I see the other parking spots for the, for the professional building, they're right up on the line, maybe we can just push those back and have.
You have time to figure that out.
But we have time to figure that out, but it's just he wanted feedback, so.
Yeah, what my takeaway is, is that maybe pulling straight into this building.
You could, yep.
Better delineation between a fence and a, and vegetation, and because headlights are, right, annoying, they do have it now coming in here, but we will try to upgrade that.
And then if you, if you see a different design where you can push that lot forward a little bit, because see how the professional building parking is right up against Richard Road?
Yeah.
See if you could move that forward, move that towards Richard Road, you can get rid of some of that back spot and having it, you know, you can have more buffer there as well.
So, that's what I was suggesting, that we push it closer, we did respect the 25-foot setback for the property, and the walkway goes up. What we did do on the other side is, we don't have any, as planned parking up here, to keep it away from the residential area, so when they're looking this way, the idea that this is already kind of has that situation, but up here, we're going to be able to delineate a little bit more. And over here, there's retention areas, and there's some good growth that's happened over all the years, so there is some delineation, but you do have the lights from the parking lot and those types of things.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I was just double checking in the book, and right now that's commercial, and I would say apartment, multifamily dwelling is a no, so that's not allowed.
It's not by special permit.
No, no.
It says, um, lane, there's only.
I looked on the residential uses.
Well, wait a minute, so, okay, wait.
Now, you got a pop and a multifamily dwelling.
Special permit by the planning board under ordinance 2216.8.1, right here, it says.
That's gonna be commercial.
It says, it says, on the table of uses, residential uses are not allowed in the commercial district, therefore the proposed residential use would require the approval of a special permit by the planning board under city zoning ordinance, and it's 2216.8.1, here it is right here.
I'm looking at it, so.
No, I'm just saying, this is what's.
What you've got written there.
Might not be the same, I know, but I'm just.
What you've got written there, what I got in this book, okay, that says an apartment dwelling in commercial, and that is, that is commercial, it's got an N, and it's no.
I just wanna, just, I just wanna look up 2216.
Okay, now if it. I looked in the table of uses, so I think.
Well, let's see what. It's just right here.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, and I looked at that, okay.
And that's how we get these three families, these three single families right here.
Undeveloped vacant lot status, okay, but that's not, that's, that's, that zone, that lot you're zoning, you actually show it right here, it's a commercial zone.
So where's the homes?
Yeah.
Okay, so on that side is, is commercial.
So what John, we did was, these three lots are in the same district.
That's right.
We got to approve a special, um, special permit, is it a special permit?
That's a permit. See, the first one was part residential aid, by commercial, and we could do that, okay? And we can allow a single family, okay, but that's multifamily, that's what it says, that's as I look at it, doesn't mean that we can't, but I want to verify where we are, okay?
So it says.
I know what he says, okay, but when I look in the book, and I look at the table of uses.
John, look at this.
John.
Look at this section.
It's, it's right here.
You get another section?
Well, it's 16.8.1, if one undeveloped lot is in a zoning district in which a desired but non-permitted residential use is sought, and the lot is boarded by other lots which are predominantly non-conforming residential uses, which we do have, by special permit of the planning board, a similar non-conforming residential use of that lot may be permitted, consistent with the zoning requirements of residential spaces in the closest neighboring residential zoning district.
And we have multifamily up here.
So I think that will work.
It will work.
Okay.
Subject to a special permit.
Yeah, so it would be under a special permit, I asked once, you get the final details.
Yeah, we'll have a lane, we'll watch it.
Yep. So, I don't know if the table of uses wasn't updated correctly.
Well, that.
Well, no, it's a new, it's not permitted.
It's not permitted.
Table, right.
Not permitted as a table.
But under that section, that's still okay.
Yep.
Because we can prove those single houses.
And then.
Don't make it that specific.
You also put the.
Non-permitted uses sought, it's still okay.
Yep, so that will work. Plus, I think it would be a good thing versus another, not a commercial building or special, you know?
The idea, when you drive down here, it kind of helps, blocks it, when you're up here, it kind of blocks it, doesn't help these.
No, I agree with all of, I know the area well.
You know it.
Yeah, I think it would be a good use of the space, just want to try to protect those single family houses behind it, which has always been, I mean, he, you know.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll.
And talk to John, see, see what's going on with him, because he's gonna be the one that's gonna come up with something.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but, but I mean, you guys always worked well before, so.
It's good, yeah, 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 so we'll, we'll, we'll get something, and we'll get somebody to come up with some ideas.
Yeah, because if we knew the distances, it would help us, stuff like that, but this is preliminary.
This is preliminary.
So, you know, I'm just, my only comment is if we could turn the angle on the parking lot, push it closer to the road, you know, it's not gonna change the entrance to the building, or, might even give you more privacy in the back for their decks as well, for the, for the multifamily unit.
But these people want privacy too.
Yeah, absolutely. So it might be beneficial for both building, for both that and single family homes. So that's my only comment, I think we're getting the project.
That's what I want, John, you've.
Yeah.
As long as I, the three, four little words kill them, you know, it takes a while.
No, I'm just, there's two, there's three different paragraphs there.
Sorry.
Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, you don't like it. So that was good.
No, it's good.
Okay, I think you get some direction on that.
Yeah, I did, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we just want to make sure it's right, like I say, you look at the table of uses and then you look at that.
No, I really like it, I like the idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
The thing that you hear, Dr. Harry, is the, the landscape.
Absolutely, you know, you may want to burn it, I, I don't know, you know, let them deal with that, let the experts deal with that, and the parking lot, you know, the parking lot, but we'll know all those dimensions when you file the plan, and talk to the names, so.
Yeah.
You know that.
Mr. Albert.
You're the best at that, sorry. I'll straighten you out, Mr. Albert.
6.2.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You'll see us.
Yeah, see you soon.
6.2, planning board recommendation on city council petition 15-19, urgent construction to accept layout indicating that Farm Road is a public way. Information on this one, we have found out that they applied for the, there's two things that we're gonna have to do here, the city council petition 15-19 is an error, okay? They come in to talk to me and said, well, what do I have to do? I said, well, if you got all your deeds and you got everything, all your paperwork squared away, then you can go in and you can just apply to the city council, you have to apply for your petition, and then once we accept the petition, then you can go ahead and transfer the deeds to the city and go forward. So then when often they, they did it, but in further investigation, found out, they started gathering, they did not have all their deeds, some of the deeds and the assessments to the center of the road had not been cleared, so therefore they do not have the deeds, so they're, in essence, their petition is an error, okay?
Withdraw with no prejudice.
So they will withdraw the recommendations, our first recommendation, is that the, the city council, okay, our recommendation is withdraw the petition, okay, without prejudice, okay, that's the first motion that we would make.
Where's this again, Nats Farm?
Nats Farm.
Nats Farm.
Day Street?
Yeah, okay, so that would be the first motion.
So move.
Then, so motion is made, seconded, all in favor say aye, both say no. Now we need a, you can do it under, we'll do it now, under communications, a, a, I make, a motion would be made in order, okay, that a bond be established on Nats Farm Road for $3,500 to cover the legal fees to complete documentation.
And what about any other work, do we have a release?
No, we have a lease, the road is done, the road was accepted, we had the letter for the road and the DPW, that's all squared, and they.
And we have the letter.
And we have the letter, okay, so the only thing that's left is the legal work on the paperwork. I talked to their, their lawyer, said $3,000, like their dirty face, we'll make it $3,500. So once, once we get a check from them for $3,500, we release the, give the, set up a bond.
File a new petition? They have to refile the petition.
Later on, no, they, they wouldn't have to, they, see, all we're doing is we're releasing the covenant, okay, we already released the covenant, but when we released the covenant at the last meeting, we said that they had to file the petition.
Right, right, right.
When they filed, went to file the petition, we found that the documentation that they had was not complete, so they couldn't file the petition, okay, so therefore we have to reestablish, we've already released the covenant, so we have to put a further requirement because they can't go with the petition, to put a bond, establish a bond for $3,500, okay? They'll give us a check for $3,500, that goes to the city treasurer, he holds it until the, their documentation is complete, and they file a new petition to the city council.
Well, I'll say this, we're getting closer.
We're getting closer.
All right, so we hit the snap, we, obviously we'll be a little more original in about making sure that those things are.
Right, right, exactly, we haven't done them in a while, you know, it's just, they, they had said all the documentation was done, and then we had further investigation, we found out it wasn't.
I'll make a motion to request a $3,500 bond.
Second.
A motion made in second, $3,500 bond on Nats Farm Road. Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
I have a motion made in second to establish a $3,500 bond on Nats Farm Road, all in favor say aye, both say no, motion carries. The directors report, we do have a new director.
Yep.
Liz Wood, she'll be in on the, her first day will be the 31st.
Okay, she'll be halfway willing.
And then the detective session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, all in favor say aye, both say no, motion carries.